I call this meeting of the Perryton Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members are present. This meeting has been duly called, but notice this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Would you all pray with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we're so very, very grateful for all of the blessings that you brought before us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for the opportunity just to live here in this community. Be with us today as we make decisions regarding the education of our children. Bless those that are involved in that education, that all that they do is within the interest of the kids and within your will for all of us. In thy heavenly name we pray. Amen. Do we have anyone for open forum?
Yes.
Mr. Gallas, for you?
Just shut Facebook game off.
We will go directly to reports. Superintendent report.
I would like to start out our report by introducing somebody to you guys. Bill Pinkham is here from Purdue Brandon Phillips and Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott.
You'd be better to some of our law firm.
He is, this is a group of attorneys that work on our behalf. They collect delinquent taxes both through our appraisal district and also through the court system as necessary. They have done a really good job for us in the past few years, and I want you guys to know him. I want him to see you all and you guys to meet. Let him answer some questions. They don't get paid unless we get paid. If, you know, they take, if they find some money for us, then they get a little payment for that. So it's really, it's a win-win situation for us. But I want to give you, give him some time to talk about what they do and how they work on our behalf and give you a chance to ask some questions. So, Bill, welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name's Bill Pinkham. I'm the managing partner of the Amarillo office in Purdue Brandon. And I just want to say again, thanks for being here tonight. Our law firm started right, right in Amarillo, Texas, so we have panhandle roots. And while I grew up in Oklahoma, my wife and I moved out here almost 15 years ago, and we absolutely love the Panhandle, love being here. We do collect the delinquent property taxes for the school district through the appraisal district, and I wanted to bring some numbers to show you what we do for you tonight. And at the end, if there's any questions, I am more than happy to answer them. And if I don't have any answers, I'll be more than happy to get you the answer as soon as we can. On the first page of your report right there is just an overview of the 2023 tax calendar year, just as a refresher. On January 1st of 2023, properties are valued by the county appraisal district, and then October of that year, the original tax bills are mailed. Now, that, those tax bills are due upon receipt, but on February 1st of the following year is when they typically go delinquent, absent some exigent circumstances. When those taxes become delinquent, the penalty and interest begin to accrue. The penalty's at 6% and 1% per month for a maximum of 12% on July 1st, and then the interest continues to run at 1% per month until they are paid in full. In May of 2024, a notice of collection penalty will be mailed for the 2023 delinquent taxes. And then on July 1st of 2024 is when the prior year's taxes will get turned over to us for collections. So not only have they been notified by their tax bill, they've been notified by the appraisal district that they're about to get turned over July 1st, and then on July 1st, they get turned over to us. And that is when a 20% delinquent penalty gets added on to the amount owed. And that's how we are able to practice law for the school district at completely cost-neutral analysis for the school district. We don't cost the school district any money for the services that we perform. On July 1st, when those taxes get turned over, we send out collection letters, and we make calls to the delinquent taxpayers to try to collect. We find this is a very useful tool to try to get them to pay before we have to file a lawsuit. If it doesn't work out and we have to file a lawsuit, we proceed to judgment, and then we'll set those properties for tax sale. Again, we try to do it, we try to get these accounts collected for the school district before having to file suit and taking the judgment or taking the sale. On the next page, we'll show the 2023 tax year collections. The levy was a total of about $11.5 million for the 2023 tax year, and of that, 96.7% was collected by the appraisal district before they go delinquent. Now, there's a very specific reason that we put this in here, and that's to show you how good a job Julia is doing at the appraisal district to get these things collected before they go delinquent for the citizens of Perryton ISD and Alcoa Tree County. So, again, she does a great job. She's great to work with. She does such a great job, so she only gives us 3.3% of the tax rule to try to collect for you guys every year. On the next page, we'd like to go back and show some historical figures for you, the 2019 through the 2022 collection rates. In 2019, there was $847,000 in turnover to Purdue Brandon to collect, and as of March 14th, the remaining balance is $65,355. That base tax amount has been reduced by 92%. In 2020, it was $298,000. In 2021, $253,000. And 2022 is $286,000. Now, as you'll notice, in 2019, that's an awful big discrepancy between the rest of the three years, and that's due to a fact that there was a very large account in appraisal district litigation that ended up going delinquent, but the subsequent years did not go delinquent. So that's why the original turnover for 2019 is a little bit, it's obviously a lot bigger than the three years behind it. For 2020, we collected 76%. For 2021, 69%. And for 2022, 57%. And you may ask yourself, well, why are those amounts going down as the years get closer to 2023? Well, that's just a simple fact. We've had more time to collect the 2019 taxes than we have the 2022 taxes. And in fact, 57% just on the 2022s, it's a very good number, and we have every confidence that those are going to be right at the 92, 93, 94% within a couple of years.
Bill, can I ask a pro-
Yeah, absolutely.
So, through the whole process, by the time we get done with the sending out letters, then we, then we, then we sent them, threatened, threatened them a little bit, sent out lawsuits, we have courthouse sales. What is the number five years out on how much we collect?
So what's the collection rate on five years or older?
Yeah.
So if you look at 2019, it'll reduce your tax rate by, or your base tax by 92%. Now, that doesn't even include the penalty and interest. And when you add the penalty and interest that are included on there, it can be up to close to 100 or over 100%.
Okay, all right. So, and so this is after the process is completely finished, by the time we've actually taken a delinquent property and auctioned it at the courthouse steps?
This is at any stage in the process. So some of the 2019s could have got collected through a phone call, or some of them could have gone all the way to sale. And I can get you more numbers on how many actually went to sale, if that'll be helpful.
What's the longest window we have for collecting?
We can go back 20 years on real property and four years on personal property.
That'd be a warning.
But the statute of limitations is 20 years on real and four years on personal. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just want to point out that the district's doing a really good job, and if we use more recent numbers, it's because of exactly what you said, where we don't have enough time to start collecting.
Exactly right. And frankly, we'd rather, again, get it collected before the litigation process is instituted, because that just adds on to the uncertainty of being able to get these accounts collected.
So if the house goes, the property goes to the courthouse steps, and it's $20,000 owed, and it brings $10,000, who gets their money first?
So it's, it's distributed in proportion to the amount of taxes owed within the entities within the county, obviously the school district having the biggest percentage of that.
What about your fee?
Our fee is 20%, and it'll be reduced proportionally to what's owed.
So you're in with that. So your fee, you get your money then. You get your 20%.
In proportion to what the school district-
Of whatever we would get, yes.
Right.
What's an average collection percentage for other, we talked about our appraisal district being very, very good at what they do. What's an average across the Panhandle?
To be collected-
One year out, say.
A year out. These are pretty typical numbers with maybe a 3% or 4% increase for all the entities within Alcoa Tree County and specifically the school district. So, they're right there within, within the range, so. Any other questions before I go on? I'm glad to get these questions. A lot of people just look at it in class size, and I don't get to answer any of them.
Oh, not us.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, the next page, this is going to show, this is a pie chart showing where your accounts are sitting. Action pending is the letters, the pre-litigation efforts that we are trying to do, and a lot of those have to do with our finding lien holders before we can file the lawsuit on these, because anybody that has an interest in property has to be included in the lawsuit before we can take a judgment on it. So the title work process can be rather lengthy, and I have some stats that I'll show you at the end to show what kind of, what we're doing with the litigation process. So action pending, 38%, 37% is in litigation, 17% is in bad address. And that's just simply that perhaps a property is so old that we can't get good title to actually who owns the property through the appraisal district records and things like that. So we have to put more time into going back and chaining the title together, together to find out who actually needs to be in there. 5% is in partial pay, the payment agreements. We won't proceed forward if they're in a payment agreement. And then 3% is in bankruptcy. And as you can imagine, we can't do anything in bankruptcy. We have to let those work out through the bankruptcy court. So it's actually a really good percentage for the school district, that only 3% of your delinquent accounts are in bankruptcy.
Hey, Brittany, real quick, sorry. Whenever we're working on our budget and we get the numbers from the appraisal district, what percentage of that do we plug in?
I go with the five-year average in general, about 98%.
So we're figuring in the 20, basically the 20% to, I mean, it's coming out of there, right?
That's the penalty on top.
That's the penalty on top to them, so it doesn't affect us at all, but, okay. So we factor in some of the loss.
Right. And again, that, that factor, going back to the second page, these are your base, this is the base amount reduced, 92%. That does not include the penalty and interest that we talked about beginning to run. So it is not uncommon to get 101, 102% of your taxes collected when the penalty and interest are added in. Then on the third page, this is the dollar range for where your accounts are sitting. If you look at the yellow, 19% are within $1,000 to $2,500, and that's a really good sweet spot for collectible accounts that we can go after. As you can imagine, the accounts $10,000 and up are going to be more difficult to collect because people just frankly don't have $10,000 lying around to go pay their taxes, and those are more likely to go through the litigation process and to sell. But you can go around the pie chart, and that'll show you exactly the dollar amounts where your accounts are sitting. And then the next page will show a pie chart of where your accounts are sitting by year. 20% are 2019, 36% are 2022, 23% are 2021s, and 21% are 2020s. So that kind of is a graphical representation of that second page of where your accounts are sitting from 2019 to 2020.
Bill, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I've already answered this, sorry.
No, not at all.
Prior to 2019, do you know how much we had outstanding?
I can go back and get those, absolutely.
It's not a big deal. I was just wondering, I know we're just looking at the last four years here, I just wondered historical to add on.
We can go back as far, as long as we've been collecting, so.
Julia would have that too, wouldn't she?
And that's who we get our numbers from.
Yeah.
These are not from our system, these are from Julia's system, so this is an accurate, you know. So, and then I just have a few top 10 accounts that I'd like to go over with you to let you know what's been collected recently. There's a $53,000, $53,686 that was owed to the school district. With all the entities involved, that's a little over $130,000. That property was paid in full within the last 60 days. So, and then we have another one, cause number 15140, $25,000 account. We've served the taxpayer in that matter, and we're going to update our title work to make sure any, anybody that has an interest in the property is included in that suit, and that we'll be taking judgment on that very soon. That's a $25,000 account. $18,589 account, CV 15135, same thing. We're going to get the title work updated and take judgment on that soon. $17,000 account, cause number CV 14505. We are ready to take judgment on that and take it to sale. And then a $14,000 account and a $12,000 account are in the same. So we're going to be taking judgment soon, and those are some very large accounts that we'll be getting collected through the school district. And again, those are the school district amounts. The overall amount owed to all the entities in the county is a lot larger than ours, so. I know that's a lot, oh, I'm sorry.
As far as the tornado's impact on collections and finding owners and things like that, has it had an impact? I know Julia did because they had to track down who was damaged, but that was not necessarily delinquent necessarily.
And we obviously took a pause, if you want to call it as such-
Yeah, I know we did.
-after the, after the tornado went through, and I would like to say this, I think I mentioned I grew up in Oklahoma, and obviously we dealt with some tornadoes over here, nothing like what you guys have dealt with. And I just, I want to say, it's such a reflection in the community how everybody came together and dealt with that situation, and it was important for us to make sure we worked with Julia and with the citizens of Alcoa Tree and to make sure that we weren't doing anything we didn't need to be doing during that entire process. So, but as far as title work goes and things like that, it's not going to drastically mess up our process unless we come across properties that we just realistically need to give them more time today, so.
Okay, fantastic.
Absolutely. And then we're going to have, Julia's going to be down there Friday. We're doing a special presentation for the appraisal districts across the Panhandle on how to appraise disaster areas and what benefits may be available to the citizens of Alcoa Tree County with everything that's gone on, not only with the fires, but with the tornadoes, so.
Great.
That's kind of all I have. I don't want to take up too much time, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Other questions?
Bill, at the beginning of this presentation told me that if it takes more than 10 minutes, something went wrong, and it's 6:14, 6:15 right now, so I guess, I think you guys were-
That doesn't factor in the exceptional prayer that we received at the big meeting.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, if you guys don't have any more questions or comments for Bill, I'll release him.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, I appreciate it.
And if you have any more questions, I'd come up, pass them through, and I'll be more than happy to answer.
Two comments I'd like to say as Bill leaves is they've done a great job for us and, and for a good number of years, and also one of the things I think you brought out, but I want to make sure and bring out how good our tax assessor is doing at her job too, so.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're thankful for both those things. Thank you, Bill.
And she's great to work with, and thank you guys very much. It's, it's an honor to be able to represent the school district, so. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to recognizing some students. If you guys will look through your book, I'm going to quickly move through some students that deserve some recognition. The first is our junior high robotics teams. Our first team is Team 54901, and they, that consists of Lazen Soza, Jacob Erickson, Carson Habather, Conley Felix, Silas Seiler, Cooper Trejo, Jackson Wine Gardner, and Kaiton Juarez. In the competition, this team placed second place overall. They were first in core values, second in robot game, and second in robot design and programming. Second team is Team 51894. This is Maro Chingo, Edward Mercado, Michael Waterbury, Christopher Cruz, Axel Vera, Jorge Miguel Franco, Stephen Martinez, Noel Herrera, Grayson McKean, and Ricardo Siniseros. And they, let's see, captured second place in core value and third place in robot game. So I want to recognize those students from our Perryton Junior High Robotics Program. The next set of students I want to recognize is our power lifters. We have a strong, no pun intended, power lifting program here at Perryton ISD. Our power lifters, for the eighth year in a row, took regionals, and at the regional championship, I just want to read through some of our students who excelled. Natalie, the regional champions were Natalie Estrada, Yairi Rodriguez, Elena Lugo, Vanessa Chavira, and Jackie Ramirez. Runner-ups were Natalie Manduano, Ruby Ramirez, Jimena Manduano, Naveya Martinez, Ivy Hernandez, Ulisa Marquez, and Alexa Hernandez. And I also have, just moving over from those students to get recognized, we just got this afternoon the girls' state power lifting results. So from those names, the ones that moved on and succeeded, were as a team, we were the, we were regional champions, we were second place at state. Here are the outstanding students. Vanessa Chavira is back-to-back state champion. Yairi Rodriguez is state runner-up, tied for first, but lost out based on body weight in a rule. Natalie Estrada placed third, and Ruby Ramirez placed fourth at state. Vanessa Chavira also was awarded the THS WPA scholarship. So those are, for our girls' power lifters, are some outstanding students. Don't want to go up against them in any, any strength competition. It'd be embarrassing to me, I think. All right. And for our boys' power lifters, six years in a row, they have taken the region. These were the state qualifiers and regional champions. Christian Nas, Jonathan Besseril, Angel Flores, Javier Martinez, Dalton Le Esperance, and Rodolfo Delgado. Regional runner-ups were Gio Ochoa and Juan Alvarez. And to state on qualifying total, Edgar Ramos and Fabian Espinoza. And we will await their results, but we want to say congratulations to them. A couple of, two more highlights that I want to bring to your attention. One is not necessarily student recognition, but I want to recognize the staff at our Ranger Roundup, who has worked very, very hard to achieve the Texas Rising Star certification in daycare, and they achieved that just recently. And I, Desiree is doing a fantastic job at our, at our daycare and, and has such a passion and a dedication to it that I have found rare in people in her, her position, and I just want you to, I want to recognize her for her and her staff for how hard they work and her leadership for getting them there, so.
It's come a long, good way.
Yes, it has. And she'll be in here in a minute, and you guys can, and recognize her. The last recognition that I want to make sure gets highlighted tonight is our own Maddie Chicken Dance, who at the Houston Stock Show, her steer received was the Reserve Grand Champion, sold for $650,000 in the sale. And I'm told by people who are more expert at this than I am that as a Brangus steer, that's, that's an even rarer occurrence. And so I do want to highlight Maddie and all her hard work and dedication for getting that steer prepared and for representing Perryton ISD so well in a major stock show. So let's give all of these students a big "A". And lastly, before I turn it back over to you, Mr. President, just want to announce the, or announce the resignations of Kaylee Johnson, who is an elementary teacher at Wright, and Victor Hackney, who is a PHS special ed teacher. Those, that's my update, and it is all yours.
Okay, any questions for anyone? Okay. Go to campus reports, and we will start with Ms. Jackson. And she's not here.
Ms. Jackson is recruiting for us at Wayland tonight, so that's the reason she's, she's going to try and capture, capture some, some students for us.
Awesome. Report included. Let's go to high school then.
Everything's great at high school.
Oh, wow.
Big posters says stolen thunder. How about Ms. Wheeler at the junior high?
Everything's better at junior high.
Oh, now we're, now here we go.
We're still working on attendance, we're back up to 96, a solid 96. Mrs. Cooper's doing an amazing job looking at that. We're going to, we're having some attendance meetings these next couple of weeks to get that, let those students know, you know, you have to be here or you don't get credit. So it's a state law, it's not a Perryton thing, it's a Texas thing, you have to show up and be there, so we're taking care of that. And robotics did amazing, we had our big day of student council and cheer tryouts, and some phenomenal, phenomenal students, and worked really, really hard to prepare, and I'm glad I wasn't one of the judges because it was tough. So I'm really proud of all our kids and the, and the work they're doing. Anyway, like I said, it's better at junior high.
Thank you very much. We'll see if it's good at Williams, Mr. Kent.
It's all good, find the wonderful at Williams. It's even better because the, we got three new students today, so just add that on to the top.
It is good.
No questions?
We can send a toner cartridge over?
Yeah, I'm not sure why. I guess we do need a toner cartridge.
Yeah, your reports got me down.
You gotta really watch how much I print on there, because I just don't want to-
I noticed that, you're saving toner.
Yes.
We appreciate the savings.
You are welcome. You are welcome.
It was the same on the teacher page, too.
Yeah.
On the contract page, I was like, wow.
I'm not sure what the deal is there.
Yes, ma'am.
It's awesome at Kinder and at Wright. I don't really have anything to add. We're preparing for our math interim assessment tomorrow for third grade. They're going to do awesome. So, do y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Reed, do you want to say something about U.S. News recognition?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
What is that?
Come back in here. So you wanted to talk, come back in.
U.S. News is the best out there.
Say something about that.
I got something in the mail, and we were recognized as one of the top elementaries out of 39,797.
How didn't you not say something about that? Yeah, but you're fading ink here, I mean.
Yeah.
But they, it's a well-deserved reward, and we, we got it, and they, they worked so hard. And I think, Jody has one, too. She might be receiving one also. I was reading it in the mail, so it's, uh-
You guys need to be less humble.
We'll be, we'll be highlighting that next board meeting. Absolutely.
Open your mail.
I didn't know, I got it, I looked, I did all the stuff, and, you know, it is an honor to be recognized by that, and-
Well, one of my constant complaints about the school system is we always get criticism for certain things, the whole group of us? We don't brag on ourselves enough for the recognition when things go really well.
And I was really trying to keep it quiet, and I found out the fire support was pretty breaking my staff, but I didn't know. They haven't taken, they don't know.
They don't know.
Good job, you know now.
I guess we'll have to get another plaque for our program.
Sorry, I couldn't let that go, thank you.
Thank you, but yeah, they, it's an, it's an honor, and they're really good people, and they, they work really hard.
Awesome. Director of Sports, Mr. Kemp.
I don't have much to add, other than what I put down, unless y'all have any questions.
I have a question about the Kinder Fence. When it gets to that eight feet, is it going to be unlocked or accessible to the community on weekends and summertime? Everybody's locked out?
It's not secure if you do that.
So everyone's locked out now?
It's going to have security gates, so. You'll only be able to exit them from the inside of the kindergarten or Kindergarten Playground. So they can go out the doors from the playground to the building, but you won't be able to go from the outside in.
Yeah, it's just a bummer. But I mean, it is, the security rules, and it'll help us with those doors, I know that, but.
I mean, that is, that's one of the downfalls of security.
It is.
If you panic it down and leave it locked open, then-
Yeah, and if we leave it open, it's one more thing to remember to make sure we lock. That's the whole point of a security fence, so.
That's right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Special Education, Ms. Hugley.
Hi.
Good day.
Very short report, but I want to make some additions to it. On the cyclical monitoring, I just want to brag about your administrators. They were very interactive and attentive in their training today. So, hey, you know, adults aren't always. Secondly, on cyclical monitoring, I also had that meeting today, another bragging point. There are like 26 areas that we're scored on. We scored perfect score on all but two, and so in those two areas, I distributed the names of those students that need some clarification to the administrators tonight, and we will get that done and submitted by next Thursday. Hopefully, there will be no cap for that one. That's it, any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Walker?
I just want to publicly thank Alan Kemp and, especially Alan Kemp, and Sharon Brown and his team that have helped us with this equipment and the huge challenges that have arose with this equipment, that they were very helpful, and then they helped get the old equipment to the auction, and we just appreciate all their help that they have given us, and, and I just appreciate my managers. We went, let's, yeah, we went yesterday to the first Surf Safe eight-hour class in Pampa to go over test stuff, and we made it through chapter five, and there's only like seven or eight more that we have to get on Thursday before we take the tests Thursday around 4:30. So I am, we have studied before spring break, we've studied during spring break, and we've studied today, we've studied tomorrow. So anyway, it's not without very much trying and everything that we want to pass this and pass it successfully.
So for food service, it's finals week.
Yeah. And if we all look like it's finals week, there's a reason.
How much did you get out of the auction?
I don't have any idea. I don't know yet. Probably not near enough, but it's not in your garage or mine, so.
Yeah, I got that problem.
But it has, we had issues with the combi and the electrical and Brittany can say I wasn't, I wasn't ugly, but I was kind of stern and they're going to pay for the 240 breakers that we had to put in there because that should have been notified before we ever did it. So I sent them the bill today and we just have some different things that have arose through all this, but when we get it all, we're gonna be very happy people. So, but anyway, but thank you. Do I have anything to add? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ranger Roundup. Glad I saw that, Reed. She's here. There she is.
I'm grabbing a couple of my girls that came with me tonight. But we have, we're parents outside of this, so we've got babies and stuff too with us.
Come on in, you guys. Don't be shy.
I have Ashley and Ashton. They're my toddlers and twos teachers. They're here with me tonight. I wanted, of course, to recognize my staff first for our recent recognition for the Texas Rising Star certification. I did not put in our board report what our certification was because I wanted to announce that publicly, but we received a four-star rating, which is the highest rating you can achieve. So we're very excited for that accomplishment. And I just asked some of my girls to come in and talk about what that process was and the benefits that they see from us participating in these programs.
Actually, you can go first. It's just great seeing all the kids develop emotionally and mentally just by following all the procedures we have and just implementing all the, like, all the resources we get to have and just letting them learn from what they can, like hands-on and everything.
Yeah, it's expanded a lot. It's expanded our, like, our lesson plans. You think so? Oh, you want to go to Ashley? I'll see. It's expanded how we plan our lessons. It's expanded the materials that we have in our classrooms. It's expanded even our, just our interactions with the students and it's helped grow our program so much and just given us so many different opportunities that we wouldn't have had without it.
He's welcome to sign up for public comment here anytime he wants to come up and talk to us. We'll take that.
Come with mine, it'll be fine.
He's like, no, I'm good.
He's not.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you do.
Yes, thanks, you guys.
For those of us that have little ones and need to find childcare, we appreciate you guys a lot.
So some of the, being part of this initiative, it's been able to provide our program. We just recently received, of course, funding for our infant classrooms and we learned that we'll get funding for our other age groups as well. And we're eligible for two program bonuses in our facility. So we'll be able to receive that here in the coming months. And they also provided us with a brand-new curriculum for our toddler age groups. So we received infant curriculum a few months ago and they are also providing our toddler curriculum now. And not just the books, but the license for the online curriculum that we use is going to be available to us. So there's just a lot of benefits for us participating in these programs. It is a lot of work. It's taken us a lot of time to prepare for these types of assessments that when the state comes into our building. It's not just licensing. There are lots of other things that we do as well and everybody has different roles and regulations and ideas of what works, but just seeing the benefits in our staff grow and what's happened with our families makes me emotional, sorry. I've never seen a better daycare community and having our professors come in and they go in, they're from other regions. They come in from Houston, from Dallas, from these huge cities that have a lot more resources than people like us do in our communities. And for them to see from the ground up that we truly have done our job just makes me proud of the work that we do and what my girls do. So I wanted to announce that. And then also, our enrollment has changed over the last week. We have enrolled eight new students. So we will have them all starting on Monday. Those are my additions to my report. Any questions?
Great job.
Yeah, great job. Appreciate it.
We're really proud of y'all.
Thank you. Well, and I just appreciate all the support that we get from, you know, it's not just the daycare and what we do, but the support that comes from everybody else and the decisions that y'all make as well have an impact on the things that we do. So thank you for always keeping those things in mind as y'all make decisions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Next up, IT Department. Ivan?
Hi.
Good day.
I don't really have any updates. I don't really have any questions.
Ivan, I did. On the hardware that's gonna be in on the activity buses, if we update those activity buses, what's, because that's something we're looking at for future reference. So if we spend the money and do that now, what are we, is that gonna be an easy transition to be able to get that hardware moved over?
Actually, we're talking about how we want to do this. We want to mount the hardware in the buses in a permanent way or do we want to have it just in there? That's something we have no idea.
It is good and bad, yeah.
It is good and bad, yeah.
If you have it mounted, they're easy to walk away.
Walk away.
Yeah. So if we decide to mount it, we need to take that into consideration. There will be an extra amount that you have to spend when you get a new bus. You have to pay for the installation again.
And it'll probably be a different amount because it's a different bus. And the other thing on the data plan, I guess, is that a fixed rate for just one year or is that gonna be extended over a five-year period or?
The contract is for one year.
For one year.
So we have that amount for one year.
Okay.
Then next year, we have to make a new contract. But most likely.
I think that's an E-rate limit, isn't it?
Yeah. So most likely, the E-rate amount, the 80% discount rate is not likely to change.
Okay.
So you can expect around the same amount more or less.
Well, it's great. I think this is a long time coming.
It is, absolutely.
All the research you've done on this is a lot. Thank you.
Appreciate the work.
Other questions?
Can you fix my phone?
Thank you very much.
Good answer.
So Mr. Brown stole a little bit of my thunder announcing our powerlifting stuff.
Sorry, sorry.
But the one person.
It was hot off the press, man.
The one person he didn't mention is our coach. And those of you that know Coach Aruda, he's as good as they come for not just our kids, but for our coaching staff and for me. Been a huge support for me this year as a first-year AD and being in the field for as long as he has. He's been really, really good for me. Just appreciate all the strength and conditioning work he does. You know, he's not just the powerlifting coach. He's also our athletic trainer. That's actually what he went to school for. He just got roped into powerlifting because he liked it. So he does a lot of work for all of our athletes. Wanted to give him a shout out tonight. Soccer updates. Girls qualified for the playoffs for the first time ever, so big deal. Playoff games Monday in Wichita Falls against Wichita Falls Old High at four. The boys, back-to-back years in the playoffs. They play Tuesday in Canyon against Mineral Wells at 2:00. So soccer playoffs start next week. They have their district meeting tomorrow and still just busy, busy, busy. And then scoreboard dedications. Friday, we have the softball scoreboard. It actually got finished and put up today. Looks really, really good out there. Thanks to Perryton National and North Plains for, Perryton National for paying for the scoreboard and North Plains for installing it. That was a much-needed update that will serve our girls for a really long time, so really appreciate that. And then Friday, April 5th, when the boys play Borger, there's a lot more sponsors on that boys scoreboard, so I don't have all of them written down, but we'll dedicate it that night as well. So that's all I have to add to my report. Any questions? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Communications and Safety.
I don't have anything on communications really. It's about to start picking up the conference and graduation. It'll get busy in April and May. Safety, do you want to go ahead and talk about mutually or do you want to wait until?
Let's just, yeah, let's just wait. It's gonna be a bigger discussion, I think, so.
The Kinder audit we had where the door is open, we submitted everything, the corrective action gesture day, so if there's more stuff that we need to do, they'll let us know. If not, then we'll be okay.
Anything else?
If you have a question.
Okay. Thank you. And Transportation. I see Dent patiently waiting out there.
I keep thinking I'm gonna get called and just, everybody else gets called.
See, you gotta, you gotta pay Liliana to get your report farther up.
Right, right.
Because I am an in-order kind of guy.
Yes, sir.
You're doing this, though, I didn't know.
That's right. I'll work on that.
It's rookie.
It's a new system.
Yes. The only thing I have to add is Myra Rodriguez passed her CDL, so we're gonna have another, another bus driver in the pool to help. She hasn't, I haven't, haven't had a chance to talk to her really about if she's gotten her official license and we'll get her going, we'll get her, get her feet wet and get her, get her driving. So we're excited to have another person to help.
And I would, I would compliment Myra when watching all of the progress and she has been very faithful at testing, at studying, at practicing, and I'm glad she's finally there.
Yes, sir. She put in a lot of hours.
Yes, she did.
In the prep and it paid off.
Did.
So we appreciate Myra. Yes, any questions?
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Ms. Hale, Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add to my report in particular. I want to go over the dyslexia update that Shelley Cole provided for us. Dyslexia is part of the Curriculum and Instruction team. I just want to highlight that our dyslexia is a specially-designed instruction that offers individualized programs. Our program is specifically designed to meet the need of each student's unique needs. So it is a very prescriptive instruction above what they're getting in the classroom. You can see the numbers of how our numbers have increased from 2022 by grade level. So we're at 57 students that Shelley is serving along with two other staff members, along with continuing to oversee about 100 other students that are no longer in the dyslexia program, but they still check on and make for sure they're receiving the accommodations they need to.
Are the numbers increasing because of diagnosis? Are we doing something different there?
So I'm assuming that we are seeing more students coming in with dyslexia than we've seen before in the past. It's also under special education umbrella now where it hasn't been before. And being new to the district, I can't really speak on the prior trends. Mr. Brown, do you have any other insight?
He's a new kid, too.
Yeah, I'm a new kid, too. You know, I would say partly, dyslexia is being moved under the special ed umbrella, so you're having a lot more intensive tests, I think. And I don't know that, I don't know that we have more. I would say that we have more in the state, but it's kind of like the, the better the tests get, the more people become aware that tests are available, the more they want to be tested, and so you're gonna see numbers rise. I don't know that they rise a whole lot because obviously if you have dyslexia or you don't, I mean, it's a condition, so to speak. But that may be one reason we're seeing an uptick in some of those numbers.
I just had a brother that went through years in school and they didn't recognize it.
Yes.
Well, we're having to start to screen it in first grade and seventh grade. We're having to screen where that.
I don't think they even, I don't think they even screened it at that point. It may be different.
So this being under the SSA, that, this 57, that's included in the numbers she gives for a total number of kids in the SSA?
You know, to be honest, I can't really answer that honestly, but I'll find out the answer and get back to you.
Just take your ask these.
No, that's a great question.
You know, one of the reasons, and to answer your question, Mr. VA, about two years ago, maybe two or three years ago, they implemented the universal screener in the schools. So every kid in first grade gets screened for possible dyslexia. And that didn't used to be the case. It used to be you had to request it or if you suspected it, you, you would, you know, screen that child. But now everybody's getting screened for it, so it's probably catching some more.
So she said individualized programs.
It's one program. I mean, it's the same program, but then they look at what the kids' specific needs are and they work with them in a small group setting, so ideally three to five students.
Didn't you say it was first grade and seventh? They test them again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's where the numbers were, was second and junior high, so they're just catching more kids. That's good.
Anything else?
Take it to the ground. We have to get to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. See you for the report. Ms. Moritz?
This next report, we'll see the disciplines a little differently. We're kind of overlapping months and so we're doing the previous month and the current month, but each report of them that last month was overlapping, so that's, you may have seen payments they want to get there. So we're gonna go by a date range. So hopefully the book will be a little bit shorter.
Saving toner.
Entrees.
Ending.
And probably a few things are, we're going to see probably 100,000 more on CDM that they already were already budgeted and on the forecast, which will help us support our ADA issue and.
Yes, our SARS issue.
Any update on the SARS?
They disallowed everyone's, disqualified everyone, every district's informal request, so now we're at the study, we're gonna have to do an informal request and.
I think they got overwhelmed with informal requests.
Maybe that's my answer.
Good.
Last thing, ADA sitting around 75% right now. I'll do it on Friday and 12,000.
100,000.
Less than what I projected.
Get those interest rates up to 10%, we'll be in good shape, the rest of it.
So the payment at the beginning of February to Bach Financial Wire, that was a, was that for the junior high?
It's for all or without standing.
Okay.
So that one included, yes.
Okay. We didn't have so much paper, like almost put it all together.
I still haven't seen that one gas bill. It's always three or four times as much as all the others.
Oh, yeah.
I assume that's the junior.
What page?
I marked it. It's on page 1630. And literally, it was, you know, it always is and it always has been, it's just, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. Don't cry too much. The gas price is not big this yet. It'll get uglier.
Oh, that one meter that's like, oof?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's obviously stands out.
Maybe it's a whole building or it's gushing a leak.
Anyway, but it's always like that. It's always been.
That's a great question.
That's a good catch. On the bottom, it would be page.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the top, right?
49. 49, who was at the top?
I was looking at the top, right? Page 1630, sorry. Yeah, 49 on the, about the fifth or sixth line down there.
That is ugly.
That's high.
Oh, that's high school.
I was gonna say, that's probably high school.
It's like the whole high school.
Because there's a whole lot more insulation in that new junior high building.
No, there's one, two, three lines for that school. The first three lines on that.
Yeah.
So just the gyms that are.
It's closer to six.
It's a lot more space. Gyms, there's probably some other things.
Add some MBRX insulation out there.
Yeah.
It's also important to know that was for some, that might be for some.
Yeah, but just relative to the ones.
Two gyms and a large auditorium. Choir space, yeah, that's.
Those rooms are.
And it's a lot bigger.
And 1960 insulation.
Yeah.
We're gonna improve that. On page 57, that's a nitpick, this is something we do.
we do. Um, bus filters just got bought at Motorparts. Um, I wondered if we could try to, this would be a bus question, get a list of filters we needed and purchase those during the NAPA Motorpart Sale, the Weenie Week thing, because I know we like, I used to look at that bill and pass out, but then I finally realized how much less expensive that was to try to buy what we could then. And I know right now, we're doing it John Deere, so it's painful but cheaper. So, any, as things are gonna get tighter, anything we can do.
Put your gas on page 70. Gas for, for being worried.
And then get a hot dog while we're at a Ryan Coopers.
Yeah.
It's Weenie Week. Yeah. Ouch.
Unfortunately.
I think last year, we started to underestimate it on the energy costs. I think we overestimated this year.
Yeah.
She's got another, she's got another fudge factory in here, so.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda this evening, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.074, Personnel Matters. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. It is now 18:50.